Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome everyone to Dayton City Council meeting for today, September 3rd, 2019. Don, Van, or Roll call please.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Member Volter.
Here.
Member Neary.
Here.
Member Basler.
Here.
Member Cornet.
Here.
Member Burns.
Here.
Member Lynn.
Here.
City Administrator Gibson.
Here.
City Attorney Edge.
Here.
Cool class, love it. How can we still stand for a... Well, this sounds unpleasant, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to your beloved and which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now like to open up the podium for the audience participation. Anybody who wants to approach council, please step up, state your name, and address.
My name is Tim Hall. I live at 410 Kenton Street in Dayton. I own the hometown Harrows, 517 St. Dayton. Came here because we were hoping to move to a larger location, and we applied for the C cap for rental movement and was denied. And I've come before you, City Council, with hopes that you can overturn this decision. For two years, I've sat back and watched as other restaurants got their money and built restaurants outside of Dayton, and it took off. And we sat here with our everything we had, and I stayed here and built the place big enough to where we get to get it to a larger location. We have, it's not just for old Daytonans, we have new Daytonans, people from kind of floodwaters in Manhattan coming in, people from up on Grant's Park, people from other communities, all come down to Dayton. We actually sold John Baxter's building to a guy right by it. He was just right by it, stopped in for a beer and some food, and talked into buying that building. So, it's a good gathering place of a variety of people, and we're moving and going in there either way, but I'm hoping that you guys can change it, or, you know, I might have done the wrong thing in the beginning, maybe I felt that I was wrong in the beginning, but it's never too late to do the right thing. And sometimes you just do the right thing if it's the right thing to do. And I think we should, we should be approved for the C cap.
Is that right? Would anybody else like to approach council? Nobody else? Move along to the approval of amendments from August 6th, 2019. Motion to approve the amendments from August 6th, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Member Lynn.
Second.
Second by Member Volter. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Cornet, same, she was not present. Moving along. The second ring for number 2019, number 15, the placement of unsolicited written materials.
City of Dayton, cut the ordinance number 2019, number 15. An ordinance requiring an delivery of unsolicited written materials to a premises to be placed on the front porch through a mail slot securely attached to the front door between the exterior and interior of the front door in a distribution box or personally with the owner occupant and further placing a fine violation of this ordinance as a civil offense. This is the second ring.
Second ring to make. We have a motion to approve number...
Mayor, can I add something?
Yes, sir. If we could have a motion and second, and then we go on to comments. We have a motion to approve order number 2109, number 15.
Motion to approve 2019, number 15.
Motion made by Member Volter. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Member Lynn. That one with comments, Mr. Burns.
I just want some clarification from the attorney. It's got on here, mail slot. I know it's illegal to put anything in a mailbox, it's a federal offense. Is that a mail slot not considered a mailbox?
No, mail slot is the ones in the door or outside the door, where it's just a slot to get into the building, not, not like a central mailbox.
Do I have a question? It's always a good first reading. Is this gonna help eliminate or alleviate the problem?
That's a first. Any other comments on number 2019, number 15? Don, roll call please.
Member Basler.
Aye.
Member Cornet.
Aye.
Member Burns.
Aye.
Member Lynn.
Aye.
Member Volter.
Aye.
Member Neary.
Aye.
Me Anderson. Moving along with the first rings. The number 2019, number 16, amending chapter 37 to conform with the city tax rate ordinance.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, ordinance number 2019, number 16. An ordinance amending chapter 37 of the city state vote ordinances to conform with the city tax rate ordinance. That's the first ring.
The second first ring we have for the evening is number 2019, number 17, the tax rate for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Your pleasure.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, ordinance number 2019, number 17. An ordinance providing for the imposition, levy collection, and apportionment of taxes to the City of Dayton, Kansas County, Kentucky for the fiscal year July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. This ordinance sets for real property to have a more tax rate for the city for the present year at .456 per hundred dollars valuation for the general fund and .050 per hundred dollars valuation for cars. The tax rate for automobile personal property is set at .5009 to $100 of value and at .739 per hundred dollars of value for all other property. This ordinance also sets the bank deposits at 25,000ths of 1%, .025% of those deposits. The payer of these taxes may pay the sum due, less 2% is paid by December 31st, 2019, or the full amount by January 31st, 2020. This ordinance requires that all taxes be paid by November 13th, 2019. Taxes not paid by this date shall incur a penalty of 10% and interest at the rate of 12% per annum shall be added on all accounts of such tax from December 3rd, 2019 to the date of payment. And that's the first ring.
Moving along with the orders. 2019, number 14R, supporting the efforts to create policies relating to climate change. Your pleasure.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, resolution number 201914R. A resolution by the City of Dayton, Kentucky, supporting efforts to create policies relating to climate change.
20... The motion to accept, 2019, number 14R.
Can we get some sort of explanation on what that means? Can we share it with the public?
Of course. Where you got that scott?
I don't know if we're going all the way there. Excellent. But why you let me take it? Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Tom. No, no, you don't. The main part of the, the main part of the resolution is now therefore be a resolve by the City of Dayton, Kentucky, that the City Council for the City of Dayton, Kentucky recognizes that the city has a fundamental responsibility to enhance health safety, economic vitality, and quality of life for all its residents, ensure a bright future for the City of Dayton, Kentucky. City Council believes that aggressive, honest, and fruitful discussions take place related to wider availability to renewable energy sources, to the importance of necessary steps to reduce greenhouse gases into the atmosphere, and to develop sustainable-based policies. City Council is also committed to work closely with our federal and state representatives to develop public policy that moves our state and city in this direction. That's part of this result. Excellent.
Any other comments or...
I need a motion.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Baker. You have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Volter. Comments?
Yes.
Please.
I'm all for this, but what we need to start with is our streets, and the trucks, our businesses, our houses, our cars. There's a lot, a lot of complaining about that, and I know that we've talked about this before, and that there's an ordinance in place already that if you make the mess, you clean it up, and that Mr. Starb should be doing this on a regular basis, and nobody's seeing that. I think some attempts have been made with bulldozer and things that shouldn't be used on the city streets. So I think we really need to start enforcing this cleanup and getting Mr. Starb to at least know that Super has been down that way once.
Yeah, I talked to him today. He just...
Once a week?
Well, no, probably not for school consumption, but as a part of...
Was there an agreement for him to do once a week?
No, I think, I think it was two weeks. It wasn't once a week. What's the month that he...
It's not even happened once a month.
No. I hadn't heard anything until, until I got back today, and people were saying that they would talk to him. So I talked to him today, and he told me to put it up. I just don't call it a manhead if there's not issues going on.
I'd like to remind us, in the city administration, when this development, not this development in person, when we first started talking about the melting of the river from, I questioned the developers, and I asked them, would the trucks be covered, and would there be a wash for the trucks, would the trucks be washed? And they couldn't be emphatically they would, and never has been done. I'm not blaming this construction crew. I'm telling you, we've fallen short by not upholding the agreement of the first contract we have with developers. But this climate change thing, people, we've got too many other things, important things to worry about than this.
Mr. Mayor, I answer the call and question. We can get back to discussion on these other issues later, on our unfinished business.
Yes, sir. So, any other questions, comments concerning the ordinance I have? No more? His ladies, roll call please.
Member Cornet?
Yes.
Member Burns?
No.
Member Lynn?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Yes.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Basler?
Yes.
Passes. Moving along to order number 2019, number 15R, the additional grant funds for the Dayton State Route to School Project.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, resolution number 2019, number 15R. A resolution authorizing the city to enter into an agreement, amended agreement, for the transportation cabinet for an additional grant of funds for the Dayton State Route to School Project.
Do we have a motion to pass, order number 210, 2019, number 15R?
Aye.
Member Lynn has made the motion. Second by Member Cornet. Any comments or discussion? Roll call please, Don.
Member Burns?
Yes.
Aye. Member Lynn?
Yes.
Member Volter?
Yes.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Cornet?
Aye.
Council passes 2019, number 15R, Anderson. Number 2019, number 16R, declare a surplus property as undressed, paid in.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, municipal order number 2019, number 169. A municipal order declaring city unpantable property as surplus and authorizing the mayor to dispose real property consisting of a vacant lot adjacent to 120 O'Fallon Avenue. Being hereby ordered by the City of Dayton, Kentucky as follows. That the City of Dayton, in accordance with provisions of KRS 82.083, hereby makes the following findings. That is in the public interest for the city declared as surplus an undressed vacant lot of real property commonly located adjacent to 120 O'Fallon Avenue approximately .41 acres in size and identified as PIBN 999993819700. That the intended purpose of the property described herein at this time of purchase is unknown. That is in the public interest to sell or dispose of the property since the real property is located outside the city limits. The method of disposal is to be sold by sealed bids pursuant to PIRIS 82.0304E.
His ladies, read number 2019, 16R. Do we have any, do we have a motion to accept it?
Move to accept 2019, 16R.
Member Volter's made the motion. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Lynn. Do we have discussion concerning this?
Is this the lot by the, by the...
Queen City.
Queen City?
Yes, sir. Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Member Lynn?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Cornet?
Aye.
Member Burns?
Aye.
Passes you, Anderson. Quick mayor's report. Been a pretty exciting and fun weekend, or week, or month in Dayton. Last month, we opened Aaron's Way down on the riverfront, opened up, was it a quarter mile? Yeah, a little bit more maybe. Quarter mile plus of riverfront access to people so they can get down there and jog and walk and bike and enjoy the river. So we'll be doing some more stuff here in the future with moving that riverfront commons beyond that space all the way down to the Marin. So it's a pretty exciting time to be able to open that up. Of course, we always want to remember Mr. Aaron's and his efforts towards our country, and being able to name that after him. Second of all, I want to give a big shout out to the boys' football team. Fantastic game was on Saturday against Bellevue. They played very valiantly, and we're excited to see the next one, from the battle for the paddle. We want that paddle back. And that is the mayor's report for the month, so we'll move along to the city administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to continue to stress this, we're getting this out online and on Facebook and on the website as much as possible, but the trash schedule in the City of Dayton will change back to the week of October 14th. Your trash pickup will either be on a Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday now. Still one pickup per household, but your day of service may be subject to change from what it currently is. We've got a link, an interactive map online at the DaytonKY.com, and we're going to continue to post it a few times each week on Facebook that has a link to that interactive map, so you can check to see which day your service is changing to if it's changing at all. Again, that'll be October, the week of October 14th, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday will be our new trash pickup days. Being told the Republic will also be sending out a mailer sometime in the middle of this month to each individual homeowner, letting them know of the change and what day they're scheduled to be picked up on. So be on the lookout for that in the mail, but also feel free to check in online to see what day that will change. I know it'll be a little chaotic to start out, but we're being told, and I think our service will continue to improve with Republic through this new schedule. I've got three special event applications. First one is from the BFW, it's their annual rockathon on September 13th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Don, do you know if they need anything closed off?
No, they don't need anything closed off, they just wanted to get permission.
Okay. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve special event app. Cornet?
Second.
Motion have been made by Ms. Cornet, and the second by Mr. Burns. All in favor?
Aye.
The second is, I think it's the second year they've done it down in the industrial market. Iron Asylum, Strongman, River City Barbell Company is hosting a little event down at one of their properties on Second Avenue. They are at...
I think they're right around the...
Right down at the corner of Kenton and Second is the event. They don't list the address, it's not shown on the map, but that's the general location. As I said, it's something they did last year. They're asking for permission to close access to Second Avenue directly in front of 100 East, here's the address, and West 1101, Second Avenue, Route 6. We'd like this to use this section of the road for spectators, with more of two strong events, a truck pool, and Hercules hold.
Which one do you all anticipate?
I never heard of this report like that. You know, I'm not a guest, but I've never heard of this.
So the company that's down there, they refurbish gym equipment, and this is just kind of their annual little fundraiser that they put on. I'm pretty sure they did it last year, Don. I totally remember.
I think it was just exactly the same thing, what they requested.
The only thing that I had far towards that, they ensure that their event doesn't impact the tank, but I don't think the route goes through that, but I'm going to mention it to them that they ensure they're holding it forever for that.
What's the date of it?
What date?
The date is September 28th from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Wasn't there here? So I'd like to ask for a motion to approve, there ain't no other motion.
I'll make that motion to approve. Second?
Motion made by Member Basler, and second by Member Volter. All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Any abstentions? So we do.
And the last one is from Councilman Basler. Wants to get an event at The Lodge on October 5th from 4:00 to 11:00 PM. Would you like to request that Vine Street between 5th and 6th be closed down, Scott? Is that correct?
Yes, like we did last year.
Yeah. It's a similar event we sell in previous years. We have that front porch concert series. It's at 325, I'm sorry, this is at The Lodge, at the corner of 6th and...
Vine.
We need to make sure the neighbors are able to hear, because I think it's a great event, I'll give you that, but I just think you have to look to neighbors to know, too. If you're closing off that street.
You got some doors? Yeah. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion. Concert series.
Do a second?
Second.
Member Cornet made the motion, and the second by Member Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Member Basler abstains. All right, Scott.
There, that's all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jeff. Moving right along to the department head report. Start off this, this month with Fire Chief Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor. You all have my report, I might, too much to add to it. I want to kind of make a mention, we had had a rough month, rough month with some runs, and I just want to make mention to the guys at Firehouse and this police department. They worked really well together. We had some difficult runs, and it's kind of taxed us all, and the police and fire departments that worked really well together to make sure everything was done properly, and see, I just want to kind of make mention of that. And then River Fest went off Sunday with High Hitch, and it's another year safely behind us. So, move on to the next man.
Chief, I want to compliment your crew again, once again, you did fill the, fill the boot or something, I know I had to see you down at Stanley's Shippin' Bellevue, so congratulations on that.
Thank you, sir.
What kind of monies did you raise?
Uh, there's still one more week to go.
Oh, is there?
Yeah, there's only three weeks, that'll be all three shifts, and we'll spend some time down there.
Fantastic.
You have to have any radio, sir?
We have until the end of, whenever the fiscal year ends, so I think it's end of September, so they just started awarding grants, so we should know something in the next couple of weeks. Thanks, Ross.
Keep getting them, man. Anybody like to address your background? Make your question. Mix it up a little bit of Officer Wild, just saying, one fire cop, cop bar. Officer Wilds, hot seat.
Report, council. For the month of August, you all received my report. For the month of August, there were 63 cases that were closed. In the month of August, there were 80 total letters issued, 16 of those were citations, 58 were violations, and then there were six grass invoices that were sent out, where the city had cut grass repeatedly. Pretty much all I have, I issued seven tags to the two vehicles, and that's pretty much all I have. Questions, concerns?
I don't make a comment, Phil. I read this report. Fantastic report, as usual.
Thank you.
What disturbs me is this. On the closed cases, there were 63 reports, and 36 of them was outside the City of Dayton. On the monthly letter that went out, the report, there was 80 reports, and 49 of them was outside the City of Dayton. This is disturbing to the fact of me that we hold our citizens to a higher level than we do some of these people in South Carolina, Dallas, Texas, and I compliment you for going after these people. And it'd be interesting to me if some of these are past Daytonians, and they moved out, and they said, they have to do something at the City of Dayton. Only thing I comment I would make to you, keep after them, because it frustrates me to know when, and we trying to make this city better, and we got people in Columbia, South Carolina, Dallas, Texas, even closest to Fort Thomas, Kentucky, taking advantage of us. It's not only Manhires that you're doing, but it's Terry and our city, so keep up the great job.
Anybody else that addresses Officer Wilds?
Thank you, sir.
Your report, sir.
All right, Chief Atkins, Bill.
Your report, sir. Yeah, my report, my local report, office isn't, wasn't too bad at all as far as I'm living in. Chief Atkins said about the radio system, just to add on that, that first with September, I think they're going to be testing, and then October, they're going to start training and try to do the system coverage testing and radio programming, and then I think November is when they're going to cover it to new cities. So, November, December is going to be time for, I guess, user testing. Just making on that, so it's coming online.
But we've been assured that it will not go online until everybody, because none of the fire departments in the county have new radios yet, so it will not go online until everybody is...
Just doing testing and...
Yep. And they will go to each department, and I'm sure the police as well, and train, train everybody on how the radio is working, because there's going to be a bunch of channels and banks, and make sure everybody is fully aware and understands how the process works, and that's what's going to work.
And then just the other thing to add, Officer Isabel, he's in our, we look like the drug strike force. He pretty much spearheaded the roundup that we had months ago. They received an award from the heroin coalition, and received Angel, drug strike force, and Officer Isabel received, congratulations to them for assisting us in that area.
Kudos to him and your team. I know you guys work hard.
It's not a bad job, yeah.
Awesome. Anybody like to address Mr. Atkins, Bill?
I just want to address both chiefs, and that Michael, I heard him talk about the radios, just reassure me that the monies are there.
Oops, I was competing.
Okay. But I want to know.
Take them out, Phil. Anybody else? Thank you. You've done good work, sir. Mr. Yoder. You can have the building.
Main Street Way.
I'm going to go and tell you something.
All right. I'd like to, we ran two, two businesses over this month. One, Bunata's Coffee at 626 Avenue, they're strapping up, so we'll have a re-cutting there. And also announced basically over the weekend, the one that I've known about, Hickory Dippery Duck Retro Candy is moving from Newport to Dayton to the old Jets location, 536 Avenue. They're in there tonight, getting ready, painting, moving that board, a lot of new businesses coming into Dayton's faces. I think that's great, I think both businesses are great for Dayton, and going to be wonderful. We've got some events from our Main Street meeting last Tuesday, September 21st, where we have to be our Dayton fleet for this month, and we've also talked about, decided, or asking that, we're also having another yard sale, another citywide yard sale, so we'll open that up tomorrow morning, so some of the citywide yard sales, build that up. On September 28th, Dayton Main Street Board, we'll bring back Fall Fest, three bands, 13 vendors right now, pumpkin decorating, so we have 600 block of Sixth Avenue, between noon and 6:00 PM. between noon and six PM. And, uh, I think it'll be a good time, kind of kicking off fall, get ready for Halloween. As a segue, the Main Street Board would also like to talk about, start thinking about, uh, bringing back trunk retreat on Halloween evening in the parking lot at six fourteen Sixth Avenue, uh, in honor of Bob Slushman, uh, who was a real champion for this and, uh, unfortunately, he was a Main Street Board member for many years, good man, and kind of our way, uh, so we can put it on the agenda for next month, it's still time, but I just wanted to bring it up and start talking about that. Uh, we have two new members to our Main Street Board, we're up to five, so we're full. Nathan Kroger, who owns, uh, five twenty-six, the building next to City Building, he's in there. And Patty Simpson, she moved up Sixth Avenue, um, long-term, long-term resident, um, been showing up at our meetings, we'll have there. Our next Main Street Board meeting, we have September twenty-fourth, uh, talking about sort of grants, uh, for the streetscape, take the pipe, the right-of-way process is underway. Um, Dunn, um, Dunn, Robert and Associates is working on that, wrapping that up. I would expect that to be there after some of that, she wrapped up the next couple of weeks, and we submitted it out to the state. Uh, and after that, um, they approved it, they did, we'll definitely be moving forward in getting, uh, construction set up so we can put it up today. Please don't ask me how long this thing's gonna take. We will put as much pressure as we can, and if you didn't know, I'm trying. Uh, we applied for urban forestry grant, we're counting up, uh, soil and water conservation district for three thousand dollars, and we're looking to plant twenty trees in the eleven hundred and ten hundred blocks of Fifth Avenue. These are really nice, they're fifteen-foot sidewalks, so there's enough space to put the trees there. We'll have some, one side has, um, utility poles, so we'll put a small tree there, a small tree on the other side, so that's good for that. Uh, Walk Day project, I had this information out a few months ago, uh, that's moving forward. Uh, we received a grant for five hundred dollars from the, uh, market. It's, right now, two walking routes to the city, one I call the heritage, which goes down Sixth Avenue, um, to, um, the vine and back along Fourth, Fifth and around, and when it goes Sixth Avenue, it'll bound up on top of the flood wall, through Gilen Park and back. And both these, uh, routes start at the Warmer, at the Warmer Wall. One goes counterclockwise, one goes clockwise, so you can walk it where you want, but that'll be a nice scene there. Uh, trying to build up, uh, some of our healthier lifestyle aspects here with the Aaron's Trail, the New York Trails. Uh, walking is one of those things that I believe that almost anyone of any ability can do and enjoy, requires no special equipment, could out there do that, so that, in fact of that. Uh, Board of Architecture Review, we have new officers. Christina Kelly is our chair. Uh, Kelly Barrett is our vice chair. And Emmett Ellen Culture is our secretary of social media media. So that's there. Uh, they also have a new Facebook page, David Board of Architecture Review, check it out, there's a lot of good stuff on there, some good stuff. And that's all I have for this evening. Any questions?
Bob, did you mention the time, uh, that the Fall Festival would be?
Uh, mid-September.
Mid-September. Just one question. Uh, you mentioned larger trees on, on the side of this tree.
The side that would not have these utility poles.
I, I understand, but my concern is that larger trees have a tendency to uproot the sidewalks.
Okay. We, we can change these trees, I mean, about the same price.
I, I'm just saying, I, I don't know how everybody else feels about this, but.
I'm go, I'm going more like, uh, the October glory, maple, since we've already planted a lot of those logs, I'm like, so those are, one's gonna be, um, a shorter crab apple, um, Korean lilac type that probably topped out by twenty, and these will top off at one thirty.
And, uh, I'm just not, I'm not worried about the height, I'm worried about the roots. You got the, this tendency, tendency to upheaval the sidewalks, that's all. I, I just wanna say, just bring it to your attention.
All right. I'm agreeing with Mr. Volters because the city had to put out money, uh, to tear up trees down, put a new sidewalk, you know, on Main Street, I believe, where the roots just took over the sidewalk, so be cautious of.
I don't, I don't agree with that.
I, I have one other question, because we're talking about this, this sidewalk grant, two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, something that we got. What's the, how much monies does the city have to put up?
Uh, twenty percent.
Oh, what figure?
So we gotta figure it out. I forget if that'd be exact.
Fifty-five thousand?
Yeah, yeah. We were awarded two hundred and seventy-six, so let's say that was three hundred thousand, but it's fifty, it was less than that, but the math is easier if we do it this way.
Once again, Michael, do we get those monies?
Okay. No, thank you. I'm, the way the state goes, we have some maybe retired. Um, I'm sorry. But, uh, no, wait a minute. Thank you.
I look when the Board of Architecture Review's, uh, Instagram page is phenomenal. So it's, it's hit me up every day, I appreciate that.
Let me throw one out there, I hope you saw, we threw it, posted it out there. Also, six oh four Sixth Avenue, um, catch and flooring.
Yeah.
They have really painted and made their front facade.
It was great.
It looks one, I, I, I shouldn't have written that down here, I know I posted it on Facebook, but man, that's a, that building that has been vacant forever and really makes.
Dayton Pharmacy, uh, or everything.
Yeah.
The second floor.
Mm-hmm.
On the, isn't that incredible?
Yeah, looks awesome.
Yeah, that, that's great, so.
We never even had one for it from there.
You didn't?
No, I said, I'd love a one for it from there, that'd be awesome.
We, we can probably work that out.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Now with the, the city attorney report.
Two items for you to make. First, pass it along to council for signatures, is a signature for the new, uh, open records law. You sign that, once everybody's signed, return that to me so I can, uh, that can be reported in the city records and authorities and state be, uh, notified that we distributed it properly. Second item I've provided you is the foreclosure approval list, looking to get approval to proceed with foreclosures on the first two tables. Uh, it was like three, six, nine, twelve, fourteen total. Uh, the bottom table is just, uh, FYI as to why foreclosures are currently pending, none of those are initiated by the city. I just asked for a motion to approve the proceeding with those.
Do we have a motion to approve the proceeding of foreclosure on the properties?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Member Cornet, we have a second.
Second.
By Member Burns. Any comments concerning these?
The only comment I got, Ben, is are there any of these, uh, foreclosures affecting Bo, uh, Phil's report? Are there any of them going to coincide?
Yes, so, some of those properties are also in Phil's, they, usually, uh, well, we coordinate with Phil and talk about which ones are up on his list versus which ones taxes are made on. Try to, try to go after the worst ones.
Thank you.
Any other comments concerning the foreclosure list? I have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote?
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Cornet?
Aye.
Member Byrne?
Aye.
Member Lynn?
Aye.
Do you have it, sir?
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you very much, sir. Do you have any correspondence, Ms. Lynn?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any petitions? Unfinished business.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to know what the status is on the meeting you, you and Phil have with Mr. Dills on his water problem that's giving problems on urban terrace.
I believe, uh, Mr. Lyles did meet with Mr. Dills concerning the water issues concerning on his, uh, property. Uh, Mr. Gifford followed up with him, uh, recently, I believe this week, last week?
No, the only thing that, uh, that I know is they met and, uh, Tom, or I'm sorry, Phil's gonna get with city attorney Tom Edge, relay the information, and we'll come up with some sort of, uh, comment.
So they, they have a meeting with him and, and discussing his problem. I saw, uh, uh, Mr. Dills Saturday after the triumphant, uh, win over Bellevue, and, uh, discussed the issue with him. So, uh, he's in talks with us as well.
I, I'm just concerned we don't let this fall under the water and, because that, his problem is, is aspiring the problem on urban terrace, which coincides with what you're trying to do up in Bellevue with the catch basins. Michael, I've had this discussion with you, if you put the catch basins on the right side coming down, it will do no good at all. The water problem is on the left side, it comes down, you even have a problem, uh, somebody has a drain line coming out where the city is, the cost of the city, we have to consult because there's a, an ice block. It comes down about another fifteen feet and goes across to where Mr. Brooks used to live, live, and there needs to be a catch basin on that corner. But if you put them on the right hand side, right-hand side, that's like throwing good money after bad, I'm telling you, it's not gonna do any good. It's like putting a handle on a bucket, if you got a hole in your bucket, because you're gonna carry the water faster, but you're not gonna do, solve the problem. So I don't care what sanitation tells you, or water department, it's not gonna do any good on that side.
The, uh, the catch basin location's gonna be left up to us, but I will say that there are logistical challenges, possible logistical challenges in us putting them exactly where we want because of the location of the water line. We don't know that for sure yet. Uh, SD one's doing their, their major repair right now, and we're gonna get in and look at where we possibly could put the catch basins. I agree, we're not gonna put them anywhere, uh, that's just throwing money out the drain just for the sake of putting in a catch basin. Uh, we have strategic locations where we want to put them, we're just not quite sure exactly where we can put them at this time. Thank you.
Any other comments for unfinished business?
Well, I, uh, you know, Mr. Hall got up and addressed the council and the relationship with being denied C cap ones. I'm assuming that, um, that denial was based on our current policy, which does not allow for, uh, current businesses to apply for an abatement in that case.
What I'd like to do, Mr. Volter, uh, is to get the Economic Development Committee together this week or this month, uh, put together some changes for the C cap program. That's not the only concern I have with the C cap program. There, there are a few others. And I'd like to get a, the development committee together to make some changes to that C cap program, we can bring it back next month. I, I spoke with Mr. Hall, he said that as well, and, uh.
So does the city council need to make a motion?
On, I, I don't wish so. Uh, it's, his concerns are being heard, as are others' concerns about other issues. Uh, so we need to, how we fix more than one, uh, leak in the bucket, so we're not just carrying away. Right, Bill?
The what?
No, no, no. Sounds good.
I gotta comment about that, Ben, and I, I'm glad you brought that up, but, uh, whoever's on the economic committee, uh, and you're gonna address the, the funding, you better think about that because the monies are not there and they're gonna run out real quick. Instead of three years, you gotta think back one to two years and/or the C cap going, doing away with, so it was supposed to be a three-year program, we're probably going in almost four years now, am I correct, Mike? And so you need, if, if you're gonna do one, you need to revamp that whole system because it's just not, as you said, Ben, it's just not one thing that needs to be addressed. It's a multitude of things that need to be addressed, and quite frankly, the monies is not there anymore.
It's, it's been a successful program overall. Granted, there's some flaws, but, uh, that's why it's a leading document.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm saying it needs, things in there that needs to be addressed.
Understood, so, uh, Michael, if you could please get the Economic Development Committee together at least once, if not twice, in the next thirty days, so we can bring to council maybe some changes to the C cap, or next council, and give you those options. Thank you, Mr. Volter. Any other unfinished business?
I have a concern for Michael, I'd like to, I have to check on something. I want you to earn your pay this month. There's a utility pole on, by, it's the city garage by the railroad track.
We're calling you.
Well, I, I'll tell you something, you can call that, and they're down Florida right now, I know we're to get into that, but you can call and call and call. That pole's gonna fall, and when it falls, it's gonna fall on somebody's house in, like, niece was real close in there. I'm gonna put you on notice now.
We put them on notice, sir.
It don't matter, they're.
Well, that's all I can do, is call.
They're corporation, they don't care.
I can't fix that.
Thank you.
Any other comments for unfinished business?
More.
Uh, great, great, yeah.
And Bob, I know you've already addressed it, but we've got to have those bids out in the early spring so construction can start on that side. Got to.
Yes, sir. We don't.
I don't care if we have to pound them every day.
Put your notice, Bob.
I'm just saying, it's, because you know how critical it's gonna be, we can't let it drag on. And you, and I know you're trying, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate your efforts, but we've gotta have that construction start.
Any other comments for unfinished business? Any new business?
Yes. Um, I think that the council needs to look at Airbnb's.
Okay.
We need to put some, um, ordinances in place, so we're getting occupational license and rental property and whatever else it is that we need. And Bellevue just amended some stuff and added their Airbnb proposal in there, so I think that it's a little unique, but, uh, it's in.
Right now, uh, our current zoning ordinance makes these Airbnb's rich, basically home occupations, they're limited, they can only cover twenty-five percent of the gross floor area of any one floor in a dwelling unit, including basement or cellar. So essentially, in most of these cases, the Airbnb's are probably operating legally. Uh, what I've done already in the past, it's about a month and a half, I guess it's been a month, is I sent a letter to, uh, Airbnb corporate headquarters, asked them to disclose the, uh, locations for each of these Airbnb's, so that way we, you know, sometimes what you see online, you have to keep changing dates, and you don't know who's on or off, and anybody that's operating within the city of Dayton, ask them to disclose this information. Uh, that way, I'm hoping that we'll get that information back soon, and we can at least address it on a case-by-case basis what's going on. Uh, what Bellevue did is they went ahead and made an exemption to their home occupation to allow for Airbnb's under certain conditions. Right now, our only conditions are it's a home occupation and it needs to comply with our zoning ordinance one five four oh four six. Like I said, the primary thing that, you know, uh, invalidates most of these Airbnb is the, uh, gross, uh, floor area that's being used towards Airbnb versus being towards, being used towards a home. And of course, uh, Bellevue made an exception for that, but, you know, of all, you know, council, wherever they wanna go, the idea would be council determine what direction they'd wanna go, that ordinance would be drawn up, we would give it to planning to let the planning commission review it, provide their input, and bring it back for council for modification. Or deny.
Sounds good.
Is that his house, Bobby?
So you guys just tell me where you work.
So.
Well, we could, if, if Tom's got stuff wrapped up, we can kind of forward it on for everybody to kind of digest and we'd have discussion, open discussion in October.
That'd be probably fair. I've got, I've got the Bellevue ordinance, and I'll forward that one, and I think that's a good, not saying that's, well, we need that doctor word for word, but it's a good template, at least a starting conversation, and you can tell me what you're going, tell me right now, and then, and then we can proceed accordingly. I'll send that information on.
That's fine. And then I wanted to remind everybody that, um, Music Fest is the Saturdays, September seventh, starts at two, music starts at, or opens at two, music starts at three, goes till midnight. Song Fest is September twenty-first, that's a free event with all the kids and work. And the City Club is going to be, uh, having a haunted house up the Y, starting in March twenty.
Thank you. Anybody else with any new business?
Yes, I can say.
Please.
I wanna let everybody know that the city's gonna have Shred Day this year, Saturday, October twenty-sixth, it's from ten to noon, it's gonna be at six twenty-five, Second Avenue. It's going to be at 625 Second Avenue. It's for Dayton residents only. You will need to show your ID. It's limited to six boxes about the size of a staple box, but, you know, it doesn't get to be exactly that size. Five eleven by sixteen, and it's a paper striding event only, so please do not bring anything that's not paper items. So that'll be for all residents in Dayton. And I also want to let all the seniors know, all Dayton residents sixty years and up, that we're going to have the seniors' lunch in on October 8th at the BFLK Hall, 11:00 A.M. And you can call the city building, 491-1600, to register.
Thank you, it's fine. Anybody else with, uh, any new business?
Eric, can we say Rev today?
Oh, great point. Uh, Cincinnati Reds are hosting Dayton Tech on Friday. We'll be playing with Phillies. Their tickets ramping between $10 and $20 to watch, uh, phenomenal, worthy sensation Punisher beat up on the Phillies. So we'll have a lot of seats together. So come out with your neighbors, please. And anywhere from $10 to $20, get you a seat. Get out, catch a rev before they're ready.
Are you throwing us the first pitch, Mr. Mayor?
I will not, but what we will do is we will let the, some lucky citizen hopefully, a kid, be able to call, play ball from, from the, from the booth. So we've been talking to Mr. Brewer, and he's going to let us know who gets to have that honor. We have new business.
All right.
Bob, it's been a successful day. Appreciate everybody for showing up today, and we have a reason for a next session?
No.
We have a motion for a term.
So, a second.
Man, so many people want to leave. Very well mentioned, it was made by, uh, Mr. Neary, seconded by Miss Cornet, all in favor.
Aye, aye, by Miss Cornet, seconded by Mr. Volter.
Calls him as a CEO. Weird quote.